Okay, six, pop, welcome everyone, I'm gonna call meeting to order. We're gonna have a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This evening, the school board of the city of Manassas is meeting on Wednesday, July the 8th, 2020 for a special meeting. The meeting is being conducted virtually as authorized Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708-283 due to the restrictions on public gatherings issued by state and federal government. May I have the roll call, please, Ms. Garza?
Yes, Chairman Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. Di Maria.
Here.
Mr. Albrecht.
Here.
Mrs. Seibert.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mrs. Stevens.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. Are there any additions and corrections to the agenda?
No, sir.
Very much, Dr. Newman. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments, and I believe that Mrs. Garza has received two comments at least from parents who requested that the public comments be read at this meeting. As with all public comments, the comments are limited to three minutes. And Mrs. Garza will read those comments, and then we will go forward from there. Any citizens who are listening who have comments for our next meeting, next Tuesday evening, please send those comments into the school board's and Mrs. Garza's attention. And also note in your email whether you want your comments read during the meeting or you just want them to be shared with the board. So thank you for those of you who sent comments in, we appreciate your feedback and input. Now we'll turn it over to Mrs. Garza to read the comments that are subject to the three-minute time limit.
Yes, we, we received a total of seven comments, and two of those did not specify if they wanted to be read to the meeting, so I did not, I'm not gonna read those two, so I'm gonna read five comments that we received from parents today or from citizens. The first one is, let me start my timer. The first one is from Dana Lone, and she says, Dear Manassas City Public School Board members, as a parent of a rising grade of Manassas City Public Schools, we have participated in every service and including those prior to school closing due to COVID-19. We understand a quick decision that had to be made in March 2020. In, in the unsettled nature of the change, we understand and appreciate that students' grades were not negatively impacted by the last quarter involving online assignments. Parenthesis, and know that online learning in the fall will look significantly different than it did at the end of that school year. Close parentheses. We, we were disappointed that in our experience, none, none of our son's teachers even acknowledged that he, he put the time, the time in and did the work expected, expected of him. This made distance virtual learning engagement challenging. It is also the, and that nothing was done to acknowledge the students for the year in a war or achievements. Other school districts were able to find ways to recognize students. It is unfortunate that MCPS couldn't find some way to do the same. Looking forward to the fall may, I'm sorry, looking forward to what the fall may look like. MCPS has presented so far three options. One day a week, two days a week, or 100% virtual. One day a week does not seem like it would not work or any level as it would seem that, that they would always end, end up being like a Monday or return from a, from a holiday break. If the student return in group one, day per week, or two day per week, how do you ensure each group is getting the same information and level of instruction? And able to keep on pace and ensure those participating 100% virtual are also meeting the same goals and expectations? We, we find it hard to believe that one or two, I'm sorry, one or even two days a week in-person learning would prove beneficial to those students. Also, what happens if one option is chosen here in the summer? But it is found that it's really not working for the students once a school starts. Will they be able to change to one of the other opportunities midstream? What we have not seen in any of the descriptions really, what a typical student day will look like. A return school plan seems to be more focused on pre-K3. We have heard bits and pieces of things like all students wearing masks. Parenthesis, parentheses, which will not be easy for those with glasses, breath issues. I have to stop on this one. Next comment. Next comment is from Michelle in Dog Wessel. Hello, my name is Michelle Wessel, I have four children. Start, I'm sorry, I have four children attending Manassas City Public Schools and, and employed by MCPS as a substitute teacher. My husband is a first responder in Greater Falls. Oh, I'm sorry, in Great Falls. I urge the school board to consider returning to all full day per week scheduled for those students and staff that need, wanted, while retaining the option for teachers and students to be 100% virtual. Also ensuring that in-person teachers for grade pre-KA are separate from virtual teachers. Please see the attached article on that plan from the Texas Education Agency. Regardless of the final decision that is made, I also urge the school board to ensure that there is proper funding available to provide personal, personal protective gear that is to be used. Parenthesis, mask, gloves, sanitizing, etc., for all the, the staff and teachers. And extensive training for teachers who have remote virtual students. Thank you for your time and attention, Michelle in Dog Wessel. And she provided the link to the, to Texas Education Agency. Okay, in the next comment. The next comment is from, the sender is not identified. We have the email, but she didn't, or the person didn't identify themselves. The American Academy of Pediatrics strongly advocates, advocates that all policy consideration for coming school year start with a goal of having students physically present in school. Pediatricians further state that transmission of the coronavirus by young children is uncommon and an, an urge that remote learning is likely to result in severe learning loss and social isolation. How is, how is MCPS taking this into consideration as plans are made regarding that reopening of school this year? Also, when can parents expect their children to fully return to school five days a week? The following comment is from Maria Henriquez. Hi, I am an MCPS parent, and I want to let board, let the board know that city of couldn't open this fall unless every person, student, teacher, staff, etc., wears a mask at all times. Parenthesis, provided by the schools. Close parentheses, and MCPS apply clear air, minimize circulating air, and add air filters and virus-killing ultraviolet lights to each and every school. There is a mounting scientific research that coronavirus can stay aloft for hours in stagnant air, infecting people as they inhale. This airborne transmission of the coronavirus is a threat to students, teachers alike in indoor spaces. The World Health Organization plans to update its advice after hundreds of experts urge the agency to reconsider the risk of aerosol transmission. The possibility of airborne transmission, especially in crowded, closed, poorly ventilated settings cannot be ruled. New York Times story here, she provided a link to, to this. Until we know more and can control transition, transmission of the virus by air, city schools should remain closed, and MCPS should direct its energy and resources to providing the best online experience possible for students, for our students. Thank you, Maria Henriquez. And the last comment is by Jenna Smith. And she says, Good morning, thank you for taking parents' comments and questions for tonight's meeting. Comment, risk is part of that everything we do, and this virus isn't going anywhere. So we all have to figure out a way to continue on with life alongside it. We can hide from, from it forever. We, I'm sorry, we cannot hide from it forever. Consistently is the key, the admission of Dr. Newman. She quoted a statement that Dr. Newman provided to Inside Nova, and it states where, where he stated at some point during the school year, I would not be shocked if the school, if we use multiple versions of what we presented. Flip-flopping back and forth is unacceptable, end of quote. We don't have all the answers, but we do not, I'm sorry, we do not know that children seem to be less susceptible to these viruses and also less likely to transmit, transmitted. Virtual learning is inadequate for us for use in the whole of our district. I agree that options should be available for those who need, wanted. But to expect teachers to be able to teach their fullest ability, parentheses, without proper training, close. And for children to learn to their fullest potential is unrealistic. Children need to face-to-face communication, having parents, guardians, daycare providers with varying degrees of education as, as the main source of assistance to students. Simply is unacceptable in order for each student to have the same education. Certainly families without, with money to provide their children with private tutor and families where parent, where parents have a degree in teaching or some higher education degree, master or doctorate, will absolutely have that advantage overall, over all the other students. Making masks mandatory is a bad idea that will not work, especially for younger students. The mask will become a toy, slingshot, tissue, etc. Even for older students, expecting them to wear, wear it at all, all day long and focus on learning is unrealistic. Many, many adults can hardly stand it, go, to go to the store with the added sweat and create a, and creates, and glasses fogging up, up and such. Also, there is no proof that masks protect that wear of others. Boxes of surgical, surgical masks have disclaimer of their label that states that they do not protect against coronavirus. And that was the last comment.
All right, thank you very much, Mrs. Garza, I appreciate reading those comments. And thanks to all the citizens who submitted comments. Again, we appreciate your feedback, and we definitely will pay attention to all of it, so thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Sir, I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Di Maria, second by Austin Stevens, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? If not, may I have a roll call vote, please, Ms. Garza?
Yes, Chairman Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Kiefer.
Aye.
Mr. Di Maria.
Aye.
Mrs. Seibert.
Aye.
Mrs. Williams.
Aye.
Mrs. Stevens.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza.
I voted aye, too, by the way.
What was that?
I said I voted aye, also, I didn't hear my name called.
I'm sorry, Mr. Albrecht.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garza and Mr. Albrecht. The ayes have it, seven, zero, the consent agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda, and actually the last official item, discussion agendas, human achievement. I think we're gonna start with Dr. Newman, who will segue into Dr. Saunders, if I'm not mistaken, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Newman.
Before I turn it over to Dr. Saunders to present the final task force product, which we're going to detail about the options to reopen and start the 2021 school year, I want to thank the over 100 Manassas City Public School family members that served on the task force. And for the many hours of dedication and hard work that they put into this task. Presentation tonight is a culmination of this hard work and commitment from the task force. We tried to get as many viewpoints and expertise of a wide range of talented individuals. We could not have a task force of a thousand, so we could not include everyone on the task force. The 106-member task force included 23 central office personnel, 13 principals, whether that was a principal or assistant principal, 45 teachers, and 25 support staff. We were also humbled by the participation of our staff and parents as far as survey participation. We had over 700 staff and almost 2,000 families respond to the most recent survey. The plan and survey results will be shared with the board and made public. Several members of the task force also provided the parent perspective throughout the process. In addition to the survey responses from our parents, as we know, the decision will make a very direct impact on the lives of our parents and guardians. As I share with our central office leadership team, we are all in a challenging situation. And you as a board will be asked to use the information shared tonight, as well as other data points, to make a decision next Tuesday. Our goal was to provide you with adequate information to make an informed and responsible decision. Regardless of the decision on July 14th, it will be met with skepticism and frustration. The emails and let's talk messages we ever see are written with passion and varied from support of the 100% in-person to 100% virtual. The charge of the task force was, was to prepare options that are responsible and provide the best educational environment allowed by the circumstances we are working within. The task force understood that the daunting challenge we are facing during these unprecedented times. Besides developing the four options that will, will be presented to the board tonight, our leadership team and task force also had to think about what would happen if we had to make a quick decision in transition to another model. We have to, and you as a board will have to consider if it is even appropriate to start on August 17th. It was one of the comments sent to the board and read by Ms. Garza, but I was asked by a reporter, what would happen if we are providing in-person instruction when the pandemic takes a downward turn? And schools are closed from the state level. I expressed to him that I would not be shocked if the plans being presented tonight would not be used at some point during the year. It is a reality that we have to prepare for and hope we do not have to use some of them. I believe everyone here would hope that at some point, we're all back together in our building serving all of our students and school families at one time with 100% in-person instruction. Until that time, we have to make difficult choices and do the best we can to educate our students in a safe, conducive learning environment. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Saunders to present the task force presentation with the four options to open the 2021 school year.
So, good evening, Chairman Williams, Vice Chairwoman Kiefer, members of the board, and Dr. Newman. Tonight, we will present the work from the Manassas City Public Schools Task Force Forward, including the preparation and options for various return to, options. As I've said in previous updates to the board, tonight I serve only as a voice and a speaker. And I will go through the slides for ease in the presentation in this virtual format. But please know, the work presented this evening represents hundreds of hours of video conferences, phone calls, data reviews, questions, research, collaboration, dedication, and passion for serving our students and our community. The work presented tonight is largely guided by the governor's phase reopening plan for Virginia's schools. The high, this highlights the different phases of reopening and provides guidance for teaching and learning, gatherings, transportation, recess, distancing, face coverings, health screenings, and activities. We continue to approach this task with flexibility and patience as the situation continues to present changing and unique circumstances. For example, Monday, Virginia, the Virginia Department of Education issued new guidance recommending that schools keep at least three feet distance between people when planning for Phase 3 of reopening, citing recently released from the World Health Organization and the American Academy of Pediatrics. This guidance is different than the six-feet recommendation we use for the majority of our planning. And while it does not change our options presented, it does provide more flexibility for making any of the options happen in our schools. Virginia is currently in Phase 3 of reopening. This phase allows for schools to provide in-person instruction with social distancing measures and use of alternative schedules that blend in-person and distance learning. This presentation provides the operation plans for staff and students and four instructional options, all designed to provide students and staff with a safe and effective learning environment. In late April, we began our task force work by creating four critical action areas to guide our work and planning. These areas are operations, addressing learning spaces and environment, human resources, focused on staff needs, policies, and procedures, technology, creating equity and access for students, and instruction, developing teaching and learning models for students and staff. Our task force was set up as a collaboration loop, where ideas were shared, questioned, developed, and organized, not in isolation, but with highly qualified professionals from all areas of our school system. Members of the superintendent's cabinet, principals, assistant principals, and key division staff were assigned to lead working teams. Teachers and support staff members from each school were assigned as input and feedback teams for each critical action. In total, as Dr. Newman said, more than 100 Manassas City Public Schools professionals dedicated dozens of hours to this work. The next four slides detail the staff members for each of the critical actions and serve as a huge thank you for their service. The Operations Working Group was led by Mr. Hawkins, Executive Director of Operations and Finance. This slide presented, the slides presented tonight represent the work of these extraordinary professionals. The Human Resources Working Group was led by Ms. Billy K. Wingfield, Executive Director of Human Resources. The slides presented tonight represent the dedicated work of these professionals. The Technology Working Group was led by Mr. Bobby Barrett, Director of Technology. The slides presented tonight represent the work of these outstanding professionals. And finally, the Instruction Working Group was led by Dr. Ashley Cramp, Director of Instruction. These slides presented tonight represent the work of these amazing professionals. In addition to our 100-plus staff members on the working teams, we also gathered input from parents and staff members through the division, through electronic surveys. The following slides represent summary data points from the survey. The summary data was incorporated into the final options provided tonight. We will begin with a parent survey. The parent survey was open June 24th to July 2nd and was delivered through email and invitation as well as a public link. We received 1,928 responses. Each response may have represented more than one student and family, as we didn't, didn't ask our parents to fill out more than one survey. Some highlights, 36% of the respondents were comfortable or somewhat comfortable with returning to school in person. 52% were uncomfortable, somewhat uncomfortable, returning to school in person. 82% were comfortable with staff and students wearing face masks or shields. Parents identified anxiety, peer relationships, and stress as the greatest social emotional needs for their children as a result of COVID-19. 34% are certain to send their children for in-person instruction. 26% of those taking the survey are likely to send their, their children for in-person instruction. And 31% of those taking the survey are certain to choose a 100% virtual option. And that was about 540 students, as we asked some additional questions of those. 90% of the respondents were, were zoned for Manassas City Public Schools' provided transportation. Of those, 67% are likely to use the transportation with physical distancing, and 16% would definitely not use the transportation. All Manassas City Public School staff members were given the opportunity to provide input through a staff survey. The survey was intended to gather staff perception on the return to school. Invitations were emailed to every staff member. 749 staff members responded, a 73% response rate. The summary data points are below. 49% were comfortable, somewhat comfortable, with returning to work. 40% uncomfortable, somewhat uncomfortable. 77% comfortable with both staff and students wearing face masks or shields. 92% agreed or strongly agreed that they prefer safety products be provided by Manassas City Public Schools. 98% agreed or strongly agreed with the implementation of frequent handwashing, and 81% agreed or strongly agreed with the daily health screenings. 61% of the participants said they were confident that school, the school year will be successful with safeguards in place. 20% agree or strongly agree that social distancing can happen in a classroom. 85% of school-based staff agree that school buildings should be closed for disinfection if someone tests positive for COVID-19. 50% agree, strongly agree, that they, that they are personally in a high-risk situation if exposed to COVID-19. 65% agree or strongly agree that someone in their immediate family would be in high risk. 47% agree or strongly agree with, with relationship to care of a loved one, that they would require flexibility on how they work if required to return to the building. 33% agree or strongly agree that they would need to use sick leave or personal leave to care for a loved one. Each working group was tasked with developing plans in their area considering four return-to-school learning options. The remainder of the presentation will detail these plans. We will begin with operations, human resources, and technology. These areas remain consistent regardless of the instructional options as they lay the groundwork necessary for all instructional return to learning options to be possible. Mr. Hawkins and his team focused on the plans that would ensure learning spaces are healthy environments and compliance with state or local orders. The work follows the guidelines put forth by the Virginia Department of Health requiring schools to outline strategies for mitigating the public health risks of COVID-19. The next three slides outline a plan for promoting behaviors that reduce the spread of COVID-19. Staying home when appropriate, hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette, cloth face coverings, adequate supplies, and signs and messaging. First, staying home. MCPS will use the CDC guidelines and implement strategies to reduce the spread. We will educate staff and families when to stay home and when to return and develop policies and procedures, which we will reference more specifically in the HR portion of this presentation. We know hygiene and face coverings are important to reduce spread. All instructional staff will teach students and reinforce handwashing with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. If soap and water is not readily, readily available, staff and older students may use hand sanitizer that contains at least 60% alcohol. Hand sanitizer stations will be placed in strategic locations throughout the schools. Information will be provided to staff, students, and families on proper use, removal, and washing of cloth face, face coverings. Instructional staff will teach and reinforce the use of face coverings. Face coverings are required to be worn by staff at all times when within six feet of students. Face shields have been purchased for all school staff. Face coverings have been purchased for all nurses, custodians, and food service workers, which meet their specific needs. Face shields have also been purchased for all bus drivers and are required when students are onboard. Face coverings are expected to be worn by students, expect age-appropriate, and for those students those students who have medical conditions prohibiting their use. Providing supplies and appropriate messaging can reduce the spread of the virus. All schools and offices will be provided adequate supplies, including soap, hand sanitizer with at least 60% alcohol, paper towels, tissues, disinfectant wipes, face coverings, and no-touch foot pedal trashcans. Signs will be posted in highly visible locations that promote everyday protective measures. Cleaning and disinfecting protocols and addressing shared objects for schools are important elements of maintaining a healthy environment. Manassas City Public Schools will clean and disinfect touched surfaces within each school and school buses at a minimum on a daily basis and between use as much as possible. There will be schedules for increased routine cleaning. Students will not clean or disinfect any of their desks or objects. We will discourage sharing of items that are difficult to clean and disinfect. Children will keep belongings separate from others and individually labeled containers, cubbies, or areas. And we will limit the use of supplies and equipment by one group of children at a time, and clean and disinfect between use. Ventilation, water systems, and classroom layout are all factors for maintaining a healthy environment. All ventilation system filters have been changed and all ventilation systems have been checked to ensure proper operation. All water systems have been drained and resupplied to ensure fresh water is available for use. Drinking fountains will be disconnected until the exit of Phase Three. Water stations will be placed at all schools, which provides a safe and sanitary alternative. Seating and desks will be arranged at least six feet apart where feasible. Consulting from RRMM to assist us in classroom design in accordance with CDC guidelines is in place right now. Providing physical barriers and guides assists with keeping an environment healthy. We are installing physical barriers such as sneeze guards and partitions, particularly in areas where it is difficult for individuals to remain at least six feet apart, and providing physical guides such as tape on floors or sidewalks and signs on walls to encourage and promote staff and children to remain at least six feet apart. We will stagger the use of common spaces and shared spaces, such as the dining halls and playgrounds, with shared equipment. We will clean and disinfect between use. We will install physical barriers such as plastic flexible screens between bathroom sinks, especially where they cannot be at least six feet apart. Processes for gatherings, visitors, and field trips will be addressed to maintain a healthy operation. In-person group events, gatherings, or meetings will not be held until the region exits Phase Three. There will be no food sales or food brought into the school for celebrations, treats, rewards of any kind, or from any person or group. There will be no visits of any kind beyond the school main office. Only essential pre-planned visits will be allowed with parent volunteers or external groups in the main office. All visitors attending essential visits to the school must complete a health screening monitoring form the morning of the day of the visit. Virtual activities and events will be held in lieu of field trips. Students' assemblies, performances, school-wide parent meetings, and spirit nights will also be virtual. Extracurricular events and participation in sports activities will be conducted in ways that minimize the risk and transmission of COVID-19. Student admission and transfer processes were reviewed and updated in order to maintain our healthy environment. Schools will conditionally admit students transferring from another school in the United States, dependent on the student's current health and travel history. In collaboration with the local health department recommendations, a 14-day quarantine period may be required. We will conditionally admit students transferring from another country, dependent on CDC travel guidelines, student current health status, and travel history. In collaboration with local healthcare department recommendations, a 14-day quarantine period may be required. Recognizing signs and symptoms. Require parents to attest daily as to the health of their children prior to the entry to their respective school by completing a health survey. They are doing symptom checking. If the parent does not complete this form, the student will be denied entry to the school until it's complete, with no exceptions. Staff will also be required to attest to their health prior to entry to their respective school by completing a health form. Preparing for someone, for when someone gets sick. We will be advising staff, families of sick students to stay home in the isolation criteria. Sick staff members or students should not return until they have met CDC's criteria to discontinue home isolation. Isolate and transport those who are sick. Inform staff and parents of when not to come to school and how or when to notify the school's designated COVID-19 point of contact. Principals will work with nurses to identify a temporary isolation room for students who arrive at school and exhibit symptoms of COVID-19. Students will be monitored and cared for in the isolation room while waiting for their parents to pick them up. Staff will not transport anyone who is sick, home, or to a healthcare facility. Cleaning and disinfecting for all of our schools. Custodians will wear masks and disposable gloves as appropriate to clean and disinfect. When cleaning surfaces, use soap and water, then use a disinfectant. Routine cleaning of frequently touched surfaces will take place, such as light switches, door handles, main office desks, et cetera. More frequent cleaning and disinfection may be required based on level of use. Cleaning and disinfecting a building or facility if someone is sick. We will close off areas used by the sick person and not use those areas until after clean or disinfected. Open outside windows and wait at least 24 hours before cleaning and disinfecting. Clean and disinfect all areas used by the person who was sick. Vacuum the space using vacuum equipment. Room fans and central HVAC systems that services the room and space will be shut off. The final area of operations of maintaining healthy environment centers around notifications. School administrators will notify local health officials, staff, and families immediately of any cases of COVID-19 while maintaining confidentiality. We will inform those who have had close contact with a person diagnosed with COVID-19 to stay home and self-monitor for symptoms and follow CDC guidelines if symptoms develop. Developing a plan for transporting students is a healthy, safe way, in a healthy, safe way, is integral to opening school. This plan addresses student seating, face coverings, and driver environment. Students will be placed one per seat with staggered seating. Since students attend our school, with some students attend our school will be grouped from a family or household, students who reside together will be allowed to sit together. Students should face forward at all times. Students will be seated from the rear of the bus to the front and disembark the bus from the front to the rear to minimize close contact of students. Students are expected to wear face coverings when on the bus, and all bus drivers are required to wear face coverings at all times when students are onboard. Students who have medical justification will not be required to wear a mask. The bus driver environment. Limit close contact with others by maintaining a distance of at least six feet. Encourage students to avoid standing or sitting within six feet of the bus driver. Avoid touching surfaces often touched by passengers. The use of gloves if required to touch those surfaces. Practice routine cleaning and disinfection. Driver will be required to practice proper hand hygiene as important infection control measure, and school buses will be cleaned and disinfected after the morning and afternoon runs. The final area of operations is the food service plan for reopening schools. We will serve individually plated meals in the school cafeterias while promoting proper social distancing to the greatest extent by all students. The à la carte options will not be available. We will be using disposable food service items. Optical infrared scanners will be purchased to scan a barcode on a card or smartphone to replace the system of students keying their PIN number on the keypad. Food service employees will wear appropriate masks and gloves at all times when preparing and serving meals. Hand sanitizer will be available for use by students and staff near the cafeteria areas. All vendors delivering food supplies to the food service area through the loading dock will be required to wear face coverings. And students and parents are encouraged to use the touchless payment options to minimize the handling of cash. Ms. Wingfield and her team focused on the plans that would support the Manassas City Public Schools staff in health and wellness with return-to-school planning. Task Force Four members helped to create the employee readiness survey. The survey was open for approximately 73% of our employees completed the survey. K-12 Insight forwarded the final results of the survey to us this week. The highlights were shared earlier in the presentation. A protocol was developed to screen, monitor, and report employees that have signs and symptoms of COVID-19. Suzanne Renegar, Supervisor of Nursing, will provide training to each school's point of contact administrators at the school and central office. The Virginia Department of Health requires the disease reporting, and part of the Virginia Department of Education COVID mitigation requires that the division establish a COVID-19 response team with a division and a point person at each school. The protocol for employee screening, monitoring, and reporting of signs and symptoms of COVID-19 are here. Screening is broken down into four areas of action for each site. Point of contact and administration. The first protocol deals with the steps to be taken when an employee calls in sick before reporting to work. If an employee answers yes to any of the screening questions or is ill before reporting to work, the employee should stay home and not report to work. The employee must notify the supervisor or supervisors. The supervisor will notify the school nurse, COVID-19 point of contact person, for follow-up action. A second protocol identifies the steps to be taken if an employee reports COVID-19 symptoms while at work. First, immediately isolate the ill person from others and ask the person to wear a face mask or cloth face covering. Determine if the person needs medical care. Contact the employee supervisor. If the person is experiencing any medical emergency or emergency warning signs of COVID-19, including or not, but not limited to, these items. Call 911 and notify the operator that the person might have COVID-19. Manassas City Public Schools staff should not transport anyone who is sick to their home or to the healthcare facility. If immediate assistance is needed, you would call 911. The supervisor will notify the point of contact for follow-up action. Close off areas used by the sick person and do not use them until after cleaning and disinfection. Wait 24 hours before cleaning and disinfecting. If that is not possible, wait 24 hours. Wait as long as possible. Ensure safe and correct application of the disinfectants. The protocol also identifies, this protocol also identifies the steps to be taken when an employee reports possible exposure to COVID-19. The employee should notify the supervisors. Staff members are to immediately notify their supervisor if the person living in the same house with the employee becomes sick with symptoms, tests positive, or if they, the employee may have been exposed to someone who is confirmed or suspected of COVID-19. Supervisors are to immediately notify their point of contact. The point of contact should review with the supervisor the health department guidelines for possible exposure and close contact. The point of contact shall then report to the supervisor of nursing to review the health department guidance and appropriate reporting or action. The last protocol deals with the COVID-19 reporting and follow-up for supervisors. It identifies the steps to be taken when COVID-19 has been reported. As you can see, there is a chain of command for each step, from the point of contact to notifying the Executive Director of Human Resources, the Prince William Health District Nurse of the Day, as well as a notification to members of the executive cabinet of reporting and decision-making for possible next steps, to include cleaning, possible closure, and media inquiries and notifications. Should an employee be at risk for COVID-19 from the workplace, he or she will receive communication from the division's benefit office. All employees will receive an employee agreement for self-screening of COVID-19 symptoms. This document will be delivered by way of Talented Records. It provides a listing of COVID-19 symptoms that the employee should assess of him or herself. Should an employee have symptoms, become ill at work, been exposed, or have anyone living in their household with COVID-19 symptoms, they agree not to report to work and to notify their supervisor. The Families First Coronavirus Response Act was signed into law on March 18, 2020. It is active until December 31, 2020. The full regulation is active in board docs and can be accessed there. I'm going to share the highlights of the regulation. It identifies the reasons an employee may take paid sick leave, unable to work or telework related to COVID-19. Under the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, employees may take paid sick leave if they are unable to work or telework due to the following reasons. Is subject to federal, state, or local quarantine or isolation under related to order related to COVID-19. Has been advised by a healthcare provider to self-quarantine. Is experiencing symptoms of COVID-19 and seeking a medical diagnosis. Is caring for an individual subject to federal, state, or local quarantine or isolation. Or has been advised by healthcare provider to self-quarantine related to COVID-19. Is caring for a son or daughter of such employee if the school or place of care of the son or daughter has been closed, or the childcare provider of such son and daughter is unavailable due to COVID-19. Is experiencing any other substantially similar conditions specified by the Secretary of Health and Human Services in consultation with the Secretary of Treasury and Secretary of Labor. Employees may qualify for expanded family medical leave if they are caring for a child whose school or place of care is closed as related to COVID-19. All employees are eligible for paid sick leave provision. Employees who have worked for Manassas City Public Schools for at least 30 calendar days are eligible for the expanded family and medical leave. The Families First Response Act provided guidance on the length of leave provided. This slide identifies the leave permitted for various situations. Under the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, the amount of pay an employee will receive will depend upon the reason for the leave. Employees are entitled to pay as indicated in this slide. And just to reference, this is accessible in board docs under the regulation GCBE-R. Communication to our employees will include posters. Posters will be sent to each site, each work site, on COVID-19 topics to include employees' rights, what to do if you're exposed to coronavirus disease, face masks, do's and don'ts, and when it is safe to be around others, ending isolation and non-healthcare settings. Posters may be in English and Spanish. Digital signage at schools and central office will provide quick messaging to employees. The benefits website currently provides COVID information for employees on a variety of topics to include emotional health, physical health, coping with lockdown, working from home, and families and parenting. In anticipation of staff becoming ill, administrators requested the ability to identify preferred substitutes for each of their building. Training will be provided to these substitutes, ensuring timely continuity of instruction. MCPS is currently exploring school-age childcare options onsite through Alphabets for employees. This will be at the cost of the employee, not the division. Human Resources will provide responses to employees with COVID-19 employee concerns. This will provide division-wide communication to common employee questions. As we move on to technology, Mr. Bobby Barrett, Director of Technology, led our Critical Action Team for Technology, developing plans for ensuring remote access for all students. The Technology Task Force was focused on providing devices and internet connection. Information technology is using a multi-tiered approach, department staff, and trusted support partner, to ensure that laptops are ready to go by the beginning of the school year, regardless of the instructional options selected. Chromebooks will be phased in through grade six over the next two years through the normal computer replacement cycle. This year, students in grades in K-1 and 2 will receive them. Next summer, grades 3 and 4. The following summer, grades 5 and 6. Distribution of laptops. Students coming to school for instruction in a hybrid model would receive their laptop on the first days of school. If we were in a virtual learning model, this would require a mass distribution process. One technical challenge: Student accounts must be activated on the device while the laptop is still on campus. In the first option, students will log in in their classroom and receive support from their teachers and building based on technology teams. In a pickup model, creative measures may be required due to social distancing, such as extending the wireless network and in the defined area with parking lot to support the model and resolve login. such as extending the wireless network and in the defined area with parking lot to support the model and resolve login issues. We recognize that any instructional model, technology support is essential for success. The onsite model listed here is the normal process that the technology team members have been using for many years and provides support to staff and students with technology, technology needs at the school site. We also have an offsite model of support or a virtual help desk model. It's similar to what we used in the spring during the closure. We continue to make improvements to the best, to best support the students and the staff and keep everyone connected. Providing reliable internet access for families was another task of the Technology Task Force. Through our work, we have developed a mobile hotspot loner program. Manassas City Public Schools will communicate distribution procedures to households as the details become finalized. With a foundation formed from the operations, HR, and the technology tasks for, task forces, we are able to provide four instructional models for your consideration. Dr. Kramp led the Action Team for Instruction. This was the largest team of professionals representing all levels and schools across the division. The team developed in-depth plans for each model. We are able to support each of the models presented. Our school year is likely to look different and require a great deal of patience and flexibility regardless of the instructional options. Each will take a great deal of work by the school-level leaders, teachers, and support staff, but we are confident that together we will accomplish any of these options presented. It is important to communicate that learning in the fall will look very different from the learning that took place during the emergency closure. Required attendance at school and for, and for at-home learning. There will be new content and instruction. Increased work time and expectations. Regardless of the model, this will be full-time school teaching and learning. We will have both live and asynchronous teaching and learning. Student work will be graded, and there will be greater structure and schedules across the division. In-person learning time and at, at home learning time. Through the instructional, through all of the instructional options presented, there are several guiding principles that we held. Number one, maximize in-school learning, student learning experiences as advisable. Ensure all students receive instruction that meets state, federal standards, and have the necessary supports for success, including access to technology and connectivity, social, emotional wellness, additional supports to meet the needs of special populations. Provide training, time, and support necessary for staff to prepare for successful reopening and a successful school year. And we were concentrating on the ability to quickly and efficiently transition in and out of any of the learning models. Example, hybrid to distance or back to hybrid. As you heard in the technology slide, we are preparing to provide all the students pre-K through 12 with a laptop and hotspots for, for those households and needs. Our goal instructionally is to use familiar platforms and resources for students and teachers where possible. Schoology is our instructional platform, K through 12. Grade level teams and content areas in the secondary will collaborate and work together to build one course per subject in Schoology. An example of a teacher collaboration might be algebra. All the algebra teachers would work to create, work together to create an Algebra I course. The course will include the learning modules. All students in algebra would work out of the same course regardless of the teacher. This will ensure equity of instruction. This would work the same for grade six English or for second grade math. Each course would be chunked into modules. There would be assessment and grading. Digital resources would be available for use at home, pre-K through 12. There would be social, emotional learning supports and mental health supports. As we start through the options, I'll start with option one, which is 100% in-person learning. Our first option, all of the operational HR and technology components would apply in this model as well as some adjustments to seating and spacing requirements. Option two is a hybrid approach. The next few slides provide an overview of the hybrid approach and the components. We will further break down the specifics within a 25% student return model and a 50% return model. In both models, teachers report to school five days a week. It includes one professional day on a Monday, four days of face-to-face instruction with students Tuesday through Friday for teachers. In both models, students will be assigned a group and will attend school in person once a week at approximately 25% capacity, one day either Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday; twice a week in approximately 50% capacity, Tuesday and Thursday, or Wednesday and Friday. Some additional in-person instruction may be assigned for special ed self-contained students, special ed inclusion students with some special, some self-contained subjects in minutes, and RL Level 1 and 2 students, potentially our pre-K. Both hybrid models include a combination of live and recorded instruction. In-person instruction is focused on introduction of skills, content, reteaching skills, content as needed, small group work, providing feedback from at-home progress, et cetera. Most of the learning at home happens in an asynchronous format. Home schedules would be provided as a guide for families and students. In an asynchronous model, recorded lessons each week on new content, three recorded lessons per week at 25%, two recorded lessons per week at 50%. In asynchronous or live teaching, in-person instruction, video conference office hours, which are open to all students, video conference small groups where students receive a teacher invitation to participate, and both office hours and small groups are expected and can occur on Mondays during the professional day as well as possibly on the other days. This slide shows you what a day for teachers on Monday might look like. There are many tasks that teachers need time for in order to successfully instruct students in person and at home. Every teacher's day might look a little bit different, but this gives you an idea of how their time and tasks may be chunked out. This slide is a sample school schedule in a 25% model. In this model, students come once a week and are divided into four attendance groups. Monday is a teacher professional day, and all students are at home working on assignments and activities. On Monday from 9:00 to 9:30, all students will have a virtual check-in with a teacher over video conference. At the elementary level, there is a whole group class check-in, and at the secondary level, it is their assigned advisory group. During this time, the groups may do, may be doing a social, emotional learning lesson, a fun activity, or building their classroom community. For the rest of the day, Monday and Tuesday through Friday, students alternate between coming to school one day and working at home. At Osborne, students would attend all eight blocks on one day, and all eight, and all other levels, students will get all core classes and have a rotating schedule of electives. This slide shows a possible sample of a home schedule for elementary students in a 25% model. On Mondays from 9:00 to 9:30, students would have whole class check-in as previously described. Then they would work on assignments, watch their teacher lessons, and have encores. You can also see on Mondays that this student has been invited to two teacher small groups on video conference for additional support. Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, the student continues to work at home on teacher videos, assignments, choice boards, et cetera. Times are approximate of how much time they would need to spend daily. Students may need more or less. On Wednesday, this student, who is assigned to Group 2, reports to school. This slide shows a possible sample home schedule for a secondary student in a 25% model. The schedule is reflective of Osborne, Metz, Baldwin Intermediate, Mayfield Intermediate work on an AB schedule and have an A-period day. They would provide a specific schedule, they would be provided a specific schedule for their school. However, they would look similar. On Mondays from 9:00 to 9:30, students would have an advisory check-in as previously described. In this sample, you see that this student would work from home four days, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. The student spends two days working on G-Day classes and two days working on B-Day classes. The student work at home, works at home on teacher videos, assignments, choice boards, et cetera. Times are approximate of how much time they would spend daily. Students may need more or less. The goal would be for students to chunk their time and spend at-home time on only some of their classes each day rather than every class. On Wednesday, who is assigned to Group 2, reports to school. Move into the hybrid 50% samples. This slide is a sample school schedule in a 50% model. In this model, students come twice a week and are divided into two group, two attendance groups. Monday is still the teacher professional day, and all students are working from home. On Mondays from 9:00 to 9:30, students will continue to have their virtual check-in with a teacher over video conference. As stated before, the elementary, that's a whole class, and at the second, secondary level, that's an advisory group. The rest of the day, Monday and Tuesday through Friday, students alternate between coming to school two days and working at home. At Osborne, students would attend all G-block on one day and all B-block on the other day. At the other levels, students would get all core classes and then have a rotating schedule of electives. The working group made a conscious decision about the 50% model to have students alternate at home and school days rather than, example, Group 1 coming Tuesday, Wednesday, back for, back-to-back for their instruction. In thinking about the benefits for personalized instruction and then, and addressing student mental health and well-being, we felt it was best to break up the days at home and school as we best, as we could, as best we could. This slide shows a possible sample home schedule for an elementary student in a 50% model. On Mondays, the student from 9:00 to 9:30 would have a whole class check-in as previously described. They would then work on assignments, watch their teacher lessons, and have encores. You also see on Monday that this student has been invited to two teacher small groups on video conference for additional support. Tuesday and Thursday, the student continues to work at home on teacher video, assignments, and choice boards. Times are approximate, and students may or may not need more, more or less time. On Wednesday and Friday, this student, who is assigned to Group 2, reports to school. This slide shows a possible sample home schedule for a secondary student in a 50% model. Again, this schedule is reflective of our secondary school schedules and have an A-period day. They would be provided a specific schedule for their school. However, it would all look similar. On Monday from 9:00 to 9:30, students would have an advisory check-in as previously described. In this sample, you can see this student would work at home, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday. The student spends one day working on G-Day, one day working on B-Day classes. The remainder of the day, Monday, would be flexible for students to make determinations on which classes they need to spend more work time on. The student work at home, works at home on teacher videos, assignments, and choice boards. Times can also be changed to reflect home situations or teacher assigns small groups. The goal would be for students to chunk their time. On Wednesday and Friday, this student, who is assigned to Group 2, reports to school. Special education classes are permissible in all phases of reopening. For inclusive classes, special education teachers will work collaboratively with general education teachers to provide specifically-designed instruction for students in person and/or virtual. Self-contained classes, a total of five lessons per class, subject, or prep, will be provided to the students in a combination of face-to-face and virtual. Students will be divided into cohorts based on service needs, and different cohorts will, will be provided different face-to-face and distant learning times. You can see here how the different cohorts break out. Related service delivery would be provided in person to the greatest extent possible, and telehealth would be provided as needed. School-level administrators and case managers will communicate individually with families regarding special education services and schedules. E-cell services are provided in the hybrid model by grade levels. Grades K through 4 services provided by co-teaching following the general education schedule and teacher requirements. Pull-out support for Level 1 and 2 as needed. Level 1 students will come twice a week in the 25% model. Grades 5 and 6 service provided in self-contained setting for Level 1 and 2 classes. Service provided inclusion through co-teaching following the general education schedule and teacher requirements. In grades 7 through 12, services provided in a self-contained setting for the Level 1 and Level 2 classes and any self-contained core class. Service provided for inclusion students through co-teaching following general education schedule and teacher requirement. Moving on to option 3, which is 100% distant learning option. Option 3, teachers are provide, will provide live instruction four days a week via video conference, but not necessarily in all subjects, all periods each day. They could instruct from home and/or school. Mondays remain a teacher professional day like in the hybrid option. Teachers continue to build collaborative Schoology courses by grade, content, or course. Students receive all instruction at home five days a week. Learning occurs through both live and recorded experiences. Sample home schedules would be provided as guidance. In the synchronous live content, new content teaching, live lessons, which are also recorded and posted for viewing later for students who can engage, for, for students who can't engage in the live session. Other synchronous experiences will include office hours, small groups, class advisories, and check-ins. The asynchronous or recorded experience occur when the students view the posted videos. Videos could be recordings of live-taught sessions or additional recorded instructional material. This slide shows you what a day for teachers on Monday might look like. There are many tasks for the teachers, that teachers need time for in order to successfully instruct students in person and at home. Every teacher's day might look different, but this gives you an idea of their time and tasks, how their, how their time and tasks may chunk out. In distance learning, the professional day could be accomplished at home virtually, at school, or a combination of both. This slide outlines the hours expected by level. Our pre-K through 2 students, a minimum of two and a half to three hours a day with a teacher, could include additional targeted small groups, and one and a half hours a day of student choice activity. In grades 3 through 4, a minimum of three to three and a half hours a day with the teacher, and one and a half hours a day of student choice activities. And at the intermediate, middle, and high school, a minimum of three and a half to four hours a day with the teacher, and two to two and a half hours a day of student choice activities, assignments, teacher office hours. Advanced courses may require more time. This slide shows a sample of what a pre-K through 2's schedule in distance learning might look like. Monday remains the professional day, and the students would attend the whole-class video conference. The rest of Monday, the student choice is potential, and potentially, small groups with a teacher. Tuesday through Fridays, students would have time with their teachers as a whole class during teacher-directed instruction. Subjects for the day and time would be determined and shared out. Students would also have time to work in small groups for encore two times, free play, and lunch and work time. Teachers would off, would offer office hours daily for students to ask questions and get support. Encores will be offered live on a schedule shown here, but students could also choose to watch previously-recorded lessons or engage in others, other lessons provided, resource, other resources provided for those classes. Just a reminder, all live whole-group and encore instruction is recorded and placed in Schoology course for students who are unable to engage live so they can access it later. This slide shows a sample of what a 3-4 schedule in distance learning might look like. It is very similar to pre-K, but indicates more teacher-directed instructional time and different encore time. This slide shows a sample of what a secondary schedule in distance learning might look like. Monday remains a professional day, and students would attend an advisory video conference. The rest of the day, Monday, is student choice and potentially, small groups with a teacher. Tuesday through Friday, students would have two additional advisory times. Rest of the time, they would be with each of their teachers on a rotating schedule for classes a day. These lessons will be provided live and also recorded and posted in Schoology in the Schoology course for students who are unable to engage live. Also, Tuesday through Friday, students have work time, and teachers will provide office hours for students to ask questions or get clarification. Special education classes are permissible in all phases of reopening. For inclusive classes, special education teachers would work collaborative, collaboratively with general education teachers. Self-contained classes, a total of five lessons per class, subject, prep, would be provided to students in a combination of face-to-face and virtual. Students would continue to be divided into cohorts based on service needs, and different cohorts would be provided different face-to-face and distance learning times. You can see here how the different cohorts break out. Related service delivery would be provided in person to the greatest extent possible, and telehealth would be provided as needed. School-level administrators and case managers would communicate individual families regarding special education service. School level administrators and case managers would communicate individual families regarding special education services and schedules. Distance, 100% distance learning for ESOL. Looks very similar to the hybrid. Teachers follow the appropriate schedule. Small group sessions and office hours through video conference will be expected. Will be expected and will be offered Mondays and possibly Tuesdays and Fridays. Inclusion services will be provided through a co-teaching model. ESOL teachers may provide supplementary language development, language enrichment lessons for levels one and two. In grades five through twelve, inclusion services will be provided through co-teaching and core classes five through eight. English, math, science and social studies. L support and elevation activity strategies will be used as needed. Self-contained classes will follow the intermediate, middle school and high school schedule. Level one and two, English, language arts and English and other core classes will be taught by a duly certified teacher. Our final option, option four is the 100% opt-in distance learning. This is different from 100% virtual learning for all students because this option would be available. Um, under options one and two for parents to opt in. It is important to distinguish this is different from the full virtual model for all students as this is often and would have some different elements. Students may opt into this option out of necessity or preference. Students will opt in for a semester at a time. This option is available K through 12. Students will work from home five days a week. Additional information, students will be assigned to a full-time distance learning with a teacher, elementary or teacher secondary. When possible, we would utilize our own staff to oversee student progress and supplement when needed. Elective choices may be limited. Students will work through prescribed courses through online platforms. Platforms being considered, the virtual Virginia, K through 12, Edmentum, six through 12 and Calvert Learning, K through five. Students would utilize the platform for the majority of their learning and assignments. Teachers would supplement as needed with recorded videos, additional resources, office hours and small group video conference sessions. Through all of the instructional options, we would provide counselor supports to all students. Counselors will support social emotional learning, mental health and academic advising through multiple, through multiple methods. Recorded lesson, in-person support and hybrid model, live support. Through video conferencing, dedicated office hours. School psychologists and division social worker will also provide support as needed. We will continue to use community resources and share the additional supports available. All students would experience counselors that will implement at least one cell lesson, social emotional learning lesson to all students weekly, virtual group or recorded. Lessons will be aligned with the five, five core social emotional learning competencies. Counselor support for our most at-risk students. We've divided those into tiers. Our tier one student would have small group instruction led by a counselor to address specific skills. In-person virtual groups or recorded session referrals to community-based, based supports if needed. In our tier three, we would continue with small group instruction led by the counselor and or psychologist as noted above with additional individual school supports. Referral to the division social worker or student services coordinator for additional supports. Counselors provide limited case management and follow-up with student. We understand the importance of providing a social emotional learning opportunity and supports for our students specifically during these challenging times. We welcome Dr. Brent to the Manassas City Public Schools team. Our new executive director of student services began on, he began on July first. He and his team are currently in discussions about the social emotional learning and what we need to meet the needs of our students. So more to come in that area. Professional development, our staff will need an extensive amount of time and support to be prepared with any instructional option. This is a very high-level outline of what would be needed. We are working hard to streamline professional develop, development and be efficient, as efficient as possible with the delivery methods. Intense training and professional development, August third through the fourteenth on the following. Division Y professional development for some new resources and some needs assessment results. We have school-based professional development that principals have determined. We have professional development for safety, COVID-19 mitigation strategies. And professional development for building operations and procedures related to COVID-19 strategies. We have professional development for instructional platforms and blended learning strategies in any of the models. Principals are working to prioritize the, the professional development needs to ensure adequate time. To learn and prepare for instruction, set up classrooms, train on mitigation strategies and procedures. Human resources and operations will be working with Ms. Keegan to streamline that professional development. PD sessions will be similar format to the spring school closure for staff. Items to review in advance, sign up for the sessions on your schedule. Voluntary sessions starting around July twentieth with repeat offerings, August third through fourth, through fourteenth. Professional development will continue throughout the year for the staff. Trainings will be also be created and provided for parents on identified areas of need. Examples, school of G, video conferencing and just managing what's going on at home. Under any model, the first few weeks of school may look different than what you are accustomed to. We do need to have some focus areas and those focus areas need to be establishing relationships and classroom community within a new model for instruction. Establishing norms, routines and procedures for classroom, school and home. Device hotspot instrument, um, distribution. Training on school of G and other blended learning platforms. Building digital competency for our students. And understanding schedules and expectations for both home and school. Students may not begin right away with new content as it will take time for everyone to be fully ready to learn within any new guidelines. Success or failure of any project is communication with all key stakeholders. Al Radford, Director of Communications is overseeing and coordinating all communication plans with each critical task committee and principals. And she is helping them to consider who are the internal and external audiences that must receive these communications? What messages does Manassas City Public School need to communicate with its stakeholders? When do these communications get transmitted? And how will they be expressed in order to reach the target audience? Our communications will come through many different platforms intended to reach our stakeholders and you can see those listed here. Finally, this slide provides an overview of the new budget impacts. Technology funds will be used primarily to improve the distance learning experience for our students. 62% of these funds are for mobile hotspots to provide quality internet services to our students in need. Another 8% of these funds are for video conference, video conference conferencing licenses. Instructional needs are primarily additional L and special ed supports as well as licensed teacher support on assignments and homework for students who are working at home. The cost for the opt-in for distance learning is unknown at this time, but could be significant. We anticipate a need to provide students with some level of manipulatives and supplies to successfully work at home. Math number blocks, art supplies, et cetera, and at school without sharing supplies. Communication is for purchasing remind, remind division wide to assist with parent and student communication, including translation. Integration, one-to-one voice calling, which hides the teacher personal cellphone number. And offers a one, one-shot stop for communication in school of G. All of the action team leaders are here tonight on the conference and ready to answer your questions. Additionally, since this is a great deal of information, we wanted to make sure that you were able to ask questions after this meeting and prior to the July fourteenth meeting. We're asking that you submit questions after tonight to Mr. Lyon, who will moderate the questions and assist in gathering answers from the appropriate departments. Thank you for your continued support.
Wow. Thanks, Dr. Saunders. That was a lot and we appreciate that. I'm just reading that all, you know. Straight with the no mistakes is pretty good, but uh, and the general sense I mean it's very important information and you all did thorough jobs. We really, we really appreciate it. Before I talk it longer, I'll ask, are there any questions at the moment, any school board members?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Albert.
Thanks, sir. I think Dr. Saunders was pretty clear. They, we staff would refer all the questions come in writing. Maybe differentiate or explain how you'd like that process to be. I've got about 20.
Right, so, um, I think tonight they would prefer back book questions and any other questions we had about process or. Anything dealing with options that were presented, they prefer them to be sent to Mr. Lyon. Uh, but if there are any specific questions, like you may have seen something in the presentation that you want to clear it out or something that's wanted to actually ask tonight, um, feel to ask those questions.
So, not covered, and I saw some things from VSB A the state earlier this week. Has the HSL taken a position and nowhere did you talk about any after-school activities, which I assume regardless of the model or probably being canceled?
Mr. Albert, Virginia High School League at their, uh, June 25th meeting did not make a decision. They have deferred that and because they have deferred their response, so have we. Our coaches at the high school are submitting individual. Plans to our athletic director that will be reviewed by Mr. Plougraph and myself, but we have not signed off on any. VHL sponsored activities at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albert. Thank you, Dr. Neil. Any other general comment? Mr. Marion.
Yeah, I'll go along with Scott. I've, I've got a few pages here, but I won't, if that's not the way we're doing it, that's not the way we'll do it. I'll email those out. Um. Dr. Newman, at the beginning of this talked about how hard these people worked. I, I was hoping for some good information here. And I got more information than I ever expected. I've still got quite a few questions, maybe not 20, but I've still got quite a few questions and then I'll email those to Dave. But, um, the staff did an amazing job. Answered questions that I didn't know I had. Um, and I'm just very proud of, of our staff and all the work they did. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Marion. Ms. Stevens.
Yeah, I just heard it's, it's kind of a general question. Um, should we choose to start the school year with either 100% online or in one of the hybrid options? We could quickly move to more in-person time as we need. That would be correct. So we wouldn't be locked in to one of the options for the entire school year. We could move into something less restrictive as changes occur within the community.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Yes, that's, um, all of our options or really premise around moving as, as seamlessly as you can, um, from one to the next.
Thank you.
Okay, just to make sure I don't leave anybody out. I know Mrs. Williams is on the phone. Um, any questions at the moment, Mrs. Williams?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. And then I round out Ms. Seabird or Mrs. Kiefer. Miss Kiefer, look like you're gonna hit your button first.
Oh, unlike everyone else, I have at least 20 to 50 questions, so I'm gonna take the information that was provided, but thank everybody for, um. The level of detail, but absolutely I'm gonna process and have a ton of questions for you also beware. But thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Kiefer. Um, Mrs. Seabird.
Same here. I'll send in my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, I guess then I'm last again. The thoroughness with which you all gave us information in such a short timeframe, incredible. So we really, really appreciate the work you've done. Um, and not just you, I know obviously there were tons of staff members, as Dr. Newman mentioned initially and, uh, Dr. Saunders also mentioned during her talk. Who contributed and we can't thank you enough because it's a very, very, very important decision. Uh, we need as much information as possible and you guys done an awesome job of giving us, um, what we need to do at a starting point. And not what's ending our, so questions you're gonna get this week. But thank you, really truly appreciate to all of you who I see and all of you I can see who helped with this app. We, we truly appreciate, I can't say that enough. Uh, and with that, I'll move on to board member comments. The first commenter I have tonight, uh, Ms. Stevens. Ms. Stevens, do you have any comments?
Yeah, um, you know, I had planned to say one thing that after to, to, I had a prepared statement. But in listening to the presentation that Dr. Saunders gave, I, it changed really my perspective on many things. Um, I really appreciate the hard work that our task force has put in to put together such strong plans and options for us. All of which seem to be very workable in one way or another. And I also wanted to, uh, let all the parents know, the parents who've submitted comments, whether through email or hear through the, um. School board meeting that we really appreciate their input. And the time and the energy they've put in to sharing their concerns and their thoughts and their opinions and that those are all going to play a role in how we move forward. Um, I think we'll all have a lot more to say next week because we're all processing. This huge body of information we've just been given and that takes some time to digest and look through and think through. So we'll probably have a lot more to say next week when we meet again. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Uh, Mrs. Williams.
I don't have any prepared comments, but I do just want to thank everybody for their tremendously hard work they put into these planning. The detail is much more than I expected today and I cannot appreciate it. It will be a lot easier to, um, digest.
All right, thank you very much, Mrs. Williams. Um, Ms. Seabird.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I wanted to also thank the texts, the task force members. For their work and for getting out the survey so quickly to staff and to families. I think we're kind of ahead of the game. Some school divisions have not even done that yet. Um, and although those surveys may have not been very specific, it did get us to the point where we're at today. So, um, I look forward to digesting more of this information and getting some more questions answered. Thanks to the staff and the families and the community for all participating in those surveys. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Jamaria.
Thank you, sir. Um, I've already said thank you to all those people, so I'm not gonna thank them again. Um, but. To our parents and to our staff. This is probably gonna be the, uh, one of the most watched, uh, virtual meetings we're gonna have. Please know that we are doing our very best to come up with the best answer. No matter what that answer is, it's not necessarily gonna be good. These options that, that these folks worked on so diligently. Are the best we can come up with right now. The best is just to go back to school a, as normal, but I don't see that as an option. But know that. Our hearts are with our students and our staff and our parents and whatever decision we make. Uh, somebody's not gonna be happy. Plenty of people aren't gonna be happy. I've had people tell me that we have to go back 100%. I've had people tell me there's no way we should go back at all right now. So somewhere in between is what we've got to find. The right answer, the rightest answer. There's probably an English teacher in there that know that rightest isn't a word, but, um, we, we're gonna do our best and, um. Please be patient with us and, and. Please know that, that our hearts are in the right place and, and when nobody is doing anything. Hazardly. Everything we do i- is gonna be for the benefit of our kids and our staff and our parents. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Marion. Uh, Mr. Albert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So. Mr. Jamaria really just hit on a lot of it. His anecdotal data supported by the survey is people's opinions are pretty well split. And. And I think this board recognizes that whatever we do, there will be somebody, many people in all likelihood, who will not agree with us. I think what I want to make sure the community understands, speaking personally, but I know from this group of magnificent peers I work with, is we care about the kids and this is about students and their achievement. I really do appreciate to the comments made earlier, the data presented by staff. That was a whole lot of stuff and I felt like I was listening from a fire hose. I probably didn't take as many notes as I want, so getting questions and writing is maybe not a good thing because I'm gonna go back through everything and probably come up with a whole lot more. But these are trying times we're in and I trust the community understands that this board will do what's best for our city, our students, and yes, our staff as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Albert. Ms. Seiberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I just I just wanted to say to the staff and the central office and the task force people, our gratitude is genuine. This is, I mean, as a person who is developing a reentry plan for my own company, I know how hard this is and that's nothing compared to what these folks have had to put forward in direct contact with students, staff, bus drivers, and all the important people in our lives in the Manassas City Public Schools District. I will apologize too, on behalf of the board, even though I'm not allowed to really speak for them, for all the questions we're about to get. I had my purple pen out and got a big old notebook here, but they're important questions. I know there will be other questions that come in from parents, whether through us or directly. So appreciate the fact that you're willing to take them. In talking with teachers, I know teachers miss students and often with students, including my own, who are informative years of their lives in high school, including a senior. Everybody misses each other. It's a very important thing for us to think about in addition to the health and well-being and well-being of our students, our teachers, and our staff. I can tell you, I know this board's and the people on the screen and the people that I know are listening in tonight that serve our students, we stay up at night thinking about this. There's no right answer. It's very deflating right now, frankly, to know that no matter what decision you make, it's probably gonna be the wrong one in the eyes of the beholder. But at the end of the day, as a parent, as a school board member, most importantly, an advocate of the children in our community who need access to education, we'll continue to ask the questions. We'll continue to listen to feedback and we'll do our very, very best, as all of my colleagues here have said, to make what we think is the quote-unquote "right" decision in the moment in time. So I just want to say thank you. I do, Mr. Chair, if we're allowed to ask questions during our comments, I just had a quick question for Dr. Newman, if I may direct. So, you know, just a question that came up in my mind is, we'll be submitting questions and is there a plan for, you know, the public to know which questions the school board is submitting? Sort of the responses. So just curious and if you're not prepared to answer tonight, that's fine too.
Yes, Ms. Kiefer, what's gonna happen is Mr. Lyon's gonna send you a Google link. Once we answer those questions, we will post the question and the answer for the community to see. And to Mr. Albert, I know there was a lot today and you mentioned that you may have more questions. I do want you to know that you can go back on YouTube and watch this over again as you're planning your questions. But yes, we will find a way to post the question and the answer so the community will know where you guys are coming from and the answers that we're providing.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it may be a good idea if you're gonna be so ready to have the board members ask the questions. If there's a Google Doc, Mr. Albert has 50 questions and, you know, D'Maria's along with 20 more. If he sees that it's 20 overlap, he won't put the 20 in. And for me, I'll talk about it next week. I've been spending hours going over only thing I've been doing, talking to all kinds of people, all kinds of doctors, I could email, just my wife, hook me up, talk with teachers, people in the community, trying to get as much information as possible because I take it seriously. Something came to mind, I think it's a time is painful due to the time that tribes, men or women sold around religiousary war. I mean, it's not that dramatic in terms of not going to the war, so to speak, but it's very important and we're all taking this very seriously and echo with his sincerely. We all care about all our students and all staff in the community very much. We take it seriously. Isn't that a joke? We're not doing this for any other reason, but to do what we think based on the tons of knowledge we're trying to accumulate, best for our students, for our staff, and for our community. So that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna try to do this quickly and with the help of our staff, we're gonna do the best we can. So we request your support and feedback in doing that and know that we truly, truly care about all the kids and we'll try to do the best to them under these, and I hate to say this word, but it's true, circumstances. So we'll go forward to the best we can. And thank you all for your comments. Thank you again for the presentation. And with that, we've come to an end of this part of the meeting. We'll now go into closed session. So if someone doesn't mind, man, please have a motion for a closed session.
Sir, I move the City of, the School Board of the City of Manassas to session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part 8, Paragraph 1, of Code of Virginia 1950s. As amended for the following purposes, discussion of personnel matters, P E R S 2021-0001.
Motion by Ms. D'Maria, second by Ms. Seiberg, that the School Board of the City of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed, Section 2.2-3711, Part 8, Paragraph 1, Code of Virginia 1950 Amendment for power purposes. 2.2-3711, Part 8, Paragraph 1, session of personnel matters, P E R S 2021-0001. Any questions? If not, we have both all votes, please. But then we won't forget the call at this time.
Yes. Chairman, chairman. Chairman. Vice Chair.
Aye.
D'Maria?
Aye.
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Mrs. Seiberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
And Mrs. Stevens?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Saunders. I appreciate that. The I's have it seven zero and we will enter closed session. Well, thank you all for everything at home. We'll watch it later. And I will see you, board members, in the closed session momentarily.